Correct, sounds like good.
You guys are kind of clashing.
A little bit. He's always, he's always got the cash look.
And it makes, and it makes him look better.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. We have a preful agenda tonight. I am going to ask Mr. Minka to weigh in on awards, recognition, and celebrations that I met you and I think are quite a few.
There are a ton, too many to actually list tonight, but I will highlight a few things. First of all, our Morris Elementary Blueberry Ambassador's leadership team. They are in second place in the entire county for the People's Choice of Votes Award this year. And one small example of the money that they raised for Random Acts of Kindness around the county, they raised thirty-four hundred dollars for the Eastern Michigan Food Bank, which equates to about twenty thousand meals for needy families in our area. So that is a group just out of Morris, which is really neat. The middle school held their academic honors program this past week at the PAC and honored a lot of our middle school students for their hard work and dedication all throughout the week. And our girls varsity soccer team are Metro League champs and they are still undefeated as of tonight, so pretty cool opportunity.
Anything else?
There's lots to say, but more than I have time.
And I know we have a busy week coming up.
We have a tremendously busy week.
All right, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Just before we do that, I have been asked to add to our agenda ten E going into closed session. Do you want to talk about that?
Yep, so we want to add a closed session conversation relative to for the purpose of negotiations. And we would make that ten E. My recommendation would be to move public comment to right after the approval of the consent agenda to allow for public comment because we would need to come out of closed session to adjourn the meeting.
We didn't do that to confuse you, Cindy. Thank you. I'll make sure you know.
Hi, Pauline.
All right, with those changes, I would entertain a motion.
Wait a minute, but if you move the public comment to the beginning of the meeting, then they're not commenting on any part of the meeting if there is something so.
We could, we could leave it open, but we'll have to come back out of closed session to adjourn publicly. So we could, we could add a public comment at the beginning, so anyone that's in the public could make their comments now, and if they chose to go out during closed session and come back in to make their comments, they can do that too.
Okay.
So that's, if you'd like to add it, I think that would work too.
I would like to add that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll add one after the consent agenda and leave the one on as number eleven.
Yep.
With those changes, can I get a motion to approve? So I'm up. Stacy, any other second? Ken, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just had, I do have one comment. It doesn't have anything to do with the vote, but our subcommittee minutes that are included, they, we need to have minutes. We can't have to be emailed or blank pages. So when we have our approval of the minutes, we need to make sure. Brought this up a few times, but.
Which one is that?
Well, this one is the building tour and I think it would be nice if we just put on there where we visited so that people know, you know.
Sure, okay.
We have some record of where we were. And then the other one is building in sight to be emailed.
Oh, that's been emailed.
I know, but you can't put, I mean, we can't have that. We need to have our minutes in there.
Right, the minutes should be in there.
I.
They didn't get put in?
I understand you emailed.
They didn't, they were emailed, yeah.
It's going to be added to the minutes.
Right. Okay. I mean, no big deal, but.
All right, so we'll have those updated as well.
See if we have them prepared tomorrow.
Any other? Thanks, Cindy. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now we will have an opportunity for public comments. If you would like to address the board, please stand, state your name, and your comments to your next or last please. No, it's Travis. Anybody? Okay. All right, Mr. Minka, superintendent report.
So lots of things going on, obviously, this time of year in the spring. Gains tomorrow. The fifth graders are heading out for their fifth grade field trip to Mackinac Island, so that's going to be an exciting time for chaperones and students alike going to Mackinac. I also wanted to let you know that DEEKE has announced to their parents they're doing a STEM summer program. And they'll have a K two program and they'll also have a three five program. So for kids that are in the summertime, they'll have an opportunity to come to a camp, which is completely funded through Title I dollars. And they'll be able to participate in, you know, building activities, STEM-related activities, which is pretty neat. District-wide staffing for teachers was completed as a district team. I was, I've kind of been updating you as we've gone along. Teachers were notified last week Friday for those teachers that would be, you know, shifting roles or being into a new, moving into a new teaching position. Something that we were hoping to have for you tonight, but unfortunately, they had, this time of year, seniors have a lot of honor ceremonies and things like that. But I wanted to let you know that we're doing senior exit interviews. And those, those were completed last week and we were going to have a couple students here to share those with you. But they basically are doing these, these exit interviews to talk about their experience, to talk about their career and what they're planning on doing, this next step of their, of their, their lives, which is a pretty exciting thing. And so we, we have Ginger Ortiz that does a lot of work with our career pathways and career cruising, and she does a lot of work at our high school. We, Forts Creek is really kind of ahead of the curve across the county in that work, and John's worked closely with her. And so it's pretty neat to see what our kids are doing. It's not just about what, what career do you want to go into and you put it in a computer and it spits out an informational piece. It actually allows them to talk about what's their temperament, what is their personality, how would they blend well with others, what types of jobs would be a good fit for them. So, so seniors were doing that before they left and they're certainly now on their way to the next chapter in their lives. Wanted to let you know that I apologize, it was Memorial Day and I didn't send you a board update this week, so I'll send that out tomorrow with just some reminders and happenings. Next week is an extremely busy week. We have graduation on Tuesday, June sixth, at seven o'clock at the Whiting. If any of you are in need, Mr. Paul, I know we have your cap and gown, so if you got it, that would be great. I know some of you have mentioned to me that you already have yours, but if you're in need of cap and gown or any materials for graduation, let us know, we'll help you with that. Those of you that were there last year will recognize the venue, it'll be very similar to, to the way it was last year. Honors Night as well is on Monday next week at seven o'clock. Everything's at seven o'clock to try and keep it simple. Honors Night will be Monday night at the PAC. And the Academy will have their graduation at seven o'clock at the PAC on Friday, June ninth. So next week, obviously a busy night as we, you know, try and close out and wrap up the year. So I'll send some more pieces, you know, that, to expand on some of those and remind you in the board update that I send out tomorrow.
And when we wear our robes for all three events typically?
Yes.
Unless you want us to.
Nope, I think that would be great.
Okay.
Makes it a very classy.
We don't do it for honors.
No, no.
Do we do it for honors?
Just for.
Yes, for honors.
Okay.
I think so, I don't remember to be honest.
Honors, graduation, and the academy.
Okay.
All right, one question for them.
Yeah.
The summer camps at DEEKE, is that open to all of our students or just DEEKE students?
Right now, it's open to DEEKE students, but that's a question that I will, I'm going to add that to my superintendent question and action report, so I will find the answer out. But I know for sure it's open to DEEKE students. So DEEKE is a Title I building, so they're given those funds. On that topic though, I will let you know that the threshold for what it takes to qualify per Title I building is really, they look at free and reduced lunch percentage of students. And we are at that threshold at Cyrene and at Morris. And so it would be nice to be able to utilize those dollars, those grant-funded dollars, which actually have increased as others are decreasing. And so I'm going to start working with our field service representative. I talked with Mr. Fuller today. And we're going to be working with them on looking at what it would be to take Morris and Cyrene into that same designation, which would mean they'd be able to utilize Title I dollars in those buildings as well, which would help, so.
So we now have four out of five elementary students?
Four out of five elementary schools would meet that threshold. Gains would not, just based on their free and reduced lunch percentages, but at least the other two that are here would. So that's a good question. But I will find out about other elementary students and whether or not they can go to that summer camp, that's a good question.
How many weeks is the camp, or a week or?
It's one week, it's actually four days. It's a Monday through Thursday for K two and then same times, but the next week it's Monday through Thursday for K, or for three fives.
Great, great. Okay, next we have more subcommittee reports. We did not have any regular subcommittee, but we have the treasurer's reports.
Okay, the internal audit team met on Monday, May twenty-second, along with the rotating board member, Kerry Germaine. We reviewed the process for purchase orders, credit cards, packing slips and invoices involved when supplies are ordered and then submitted for payment. We reviewed the check registers for April twenty-second through May twelfth. Check numbers twenty-six seventeen hundred to twenty-six eighteen twenty-five. There were no void checks. There were no checks for billing in site or CDC for that period. All check documentation requested was in order. John reviewed the general fund financial statement for April thirtieth and reminded us that our state aid money is not received until July and August. John is hopeful that our fund equity will come in at six percent or better. We reviewed the Elm's Kitchen remodel bid for equipment, which we'll be discussing tonight. The bid does not include electrical, plumbing, ventilation, or demolition, demolition costs. Our next meeting will be at two PM, the twenty-sixth of June, with rotating member Rainaider. We adjourned at two forty-four PM.
Any questions, Mike?
One who maybe don't know this, Mike, that's on the table, man. When are we going to get a realistic number for Elm's Kitchen?
So that's a great, great question. So Mike actually brought that up when you got, did we get the? That would be great. Because we're actually going to be, it's a great time to talk about the kitchen, so we, as you probably well know, the state of Michigan, they, they, the MDE oversees your food service accounts. Food service accounts are very, like many of our accounts, there's a lot of strings attached to them, there are certain things you have to use the money for. The other thing that they do is they, they're careful because they want to make sure that you're spending the money out of that only for cafeteria and food-related expenditure. You can't take that money and say offset general fund dollars or anything like that. So. So essentially, the bid that we're asking you to approve tonight is to help bring our fund balance for our cafeteria fund into compliance with the state. Essentially, it sounds counterintuitive, but we have to make sure that we're not building too much of a fund balance in that account. So I believe the, the total is eighty-one thousand nine oh one, is that correct, John?
I believe eighty, eighty-four two seventy-two is for the equipment.
Okay. Okay, these were the two quotes that came into the job, okay? So the quote is for installation and for the equipment itself. So the question that Mike brought up and just referenced was, what are the other costs there? There is going to be an additional fifteen thousand dollar cost, and we won't know the exact number, but it's, it's going to be conservatively fifteen thousand because what we're going to have to do is we have to update a fire alarm and we also have to implement or put in a new electrical panel for that space. That is also money that will help draw down that cafeteria fund. So that money is not going to come from general fund, but nonetheless, I don't want you to think that that money is not, that money is in addition to what you're looking at here tonight. So you need to anticipate another fifteen thousand dollars from the cafeteria account that we are drawing down for electrical purposes. And we are going to be soliciting bids for that from local electricians so that we can try and keep that business close to home. But just so you're aware, that's going to be in addition and that, and we'll update you on that once that comes to fruition. But this is for the actual equipment and installation.
Go ahead. What happens to the old stuff?
Yep, you know, they, they will be pulled aside, I believe, they'll, generally speaking, will either try to scrap it or auction. Anything like assets of a district, whether it be that type of equipment or what have you, we're required to, you know, public auction and make it available. So that's, that's most likely what will happen with those items.
You could go if you needed any freezers.
So that.
Would that be on a website then?
So that poses a question. What happened to stuff from Mary Creeple? Poses a question to you too, didn't it? So can we find out what happened to stuff from the last cafeteria? Where it got auctioned? How much it was auctioned for, et cetera?
Yep.
And when we took our tour, the cook said some of, some of the equipment will stay there.
Well, some of the equipment will be repurposed. You know, if there's equipment that's say better than somewhere, somewhere else that we have, and then we would auction off whatever the other one would be, so. But I will find out what happened.
I would just like to be reassured that it's not some of the garage.
Are we going to have further discussion of this at ten C?
I'm sorry.
You, you could have further discussion at that time if you would like, or you can discuss it now, however you want to.
I'll wait till we. So which one of the two are we recommending? Eighty-one?
Actually.
Eighty-four?
Eighty-four, yes.
Which is the?
Advance.
Advance?
Advance, okay.
And when we went through it, Mike, we went page by page, there were, remember there were just slight differences?
Yeah, both these bids are from the same company.
It's primarily the difference, primarily the difference is in the durability, longevity of the, the equipment that was quoted. So, but you see at the top of each one, one's, the one perspect, met perspects and the other one was the alternate quoted at lesser, I don't know, qualities and what have you.
So then you thought we had another fifteen and what'd you say, a smoke alarm or?
Installation of smoke alarm and then you're also going to have to put in another panel.
Okay, another electrical panel.
Another electrical panel.
That's within that fifteen estimate.
It's within, it's going to be likely less than fifteen, but I don't want you to think that the eighty-four is all that it's going to cost to do the job. There's an additional, and I'll let you know when we get those quotes, but we're getting those from local contractors, so.
We'll have to submit that to the state as well. Anything over five thousand dollars to get their approval, that's the other handout that went around from the state from the MDE, getting their approval. I had to submit a plan of spending for that, for the food service account already, and then this is one of the items. And then each, each, for each purchase, each project, you'll have to submit the recommendation, the request for expenditure, and then annually you have to update them with the plan.
So then what's written in here?
What do you have?
It, the sheet that Mike gave us. So since we had the conversation that there may be up to fifteen thousand electrical, can I assume that the plumbing, ventilation, and demolition costs are in this eighty-four thousand?
No.
No, they're not listed.
Yeah, okay, so.
Equipment and installation.
So what?
So. Those quotes are going to become, be a separate thing that you'll see on, on that. So this is part of the bigger plan that we have to spend this money. We did spend the money, some of it, to drive down on the food service trucks that you remembered from a few board meetings ago.
Right. My only issue with this is, is if we're submitting a plan to do renovations, and I'm not trying to kick a hornets nest when I say this, but I'm going to go ahead and kick the hornets nest. We didn't have it together when we did bus bar and then we went about forty thousand dollars over budget. So here, we're not even really working with a budget because we don't know what this is going to cost, we don't know what this is going to cost, don't know what this is going to cost. So can we find out what this is going to cost and do this all at one time so that we actually operate with a budget? Or is it next month we're going to do ventilation and then in a month from now we're going to do plumbing? I, no, I mean, you know, we.
We absolutely, we absolutely can do that.
Or do we just want to throw a budget of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars together and try to stay under it? I mean, just do something so that it's finalized. Because the way we're doing this, we're going to come back at every meeting and have something else to do with, with a pro, a project.
So John, can you talk to, I guess, you know a little bit because you've been working on this, so talk about the urgency or can we put that on?
You know, ideally, if the, if the state, the, you know, the communication we got to this state is we, we, we have to keep our food service fund balance at three months operating, operations of the food service fund, not the, not the school, just the food service fund. So that, I'm just looking at some notes here, but that, initial estimates, we have to spend between three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand dollars of our food service fund. And then that's, I don't, is looking at the accumulation, that's, our food service fund is accumulated over a number of years, not just in one year. It's, it's just accumulating.
Correct.
With, with the plan of some of these projects upcoming, the Mary Creeple, the Elms, and the, you know, the local preparation of food at each of the buildings. During that process, the state is, these are new requirements, compliance that we have to follow through the MDE that with the federal monies that we receive through the free and reduced funding, they want to make sure that the money we receive is truly spent on food service processes and equipment. And that, that's, so it's, it's new, the, the compliance part of it's new, the communication part of it's new. But the general plan was something that, that Jiblow and Bill and, I mean, I think it's always something that they were looking to do, building up to this point. Now we have a, more of a timetable to take care of these expenditures and take care of these, and communicate it to the state. So, you know, that's one thing I can do. I have, I have notes here, but I can, I do, something I can give to the board is the plan that was submitted to the state, just to show, we, it's preliminary estimates of what we're going to do. We, we kept the general, like, like the initial quote on Mary, excuse me, the Elm's Road Kitchen was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Estimating on the high end, looks like it's going to be closer to a hundred, a hundred five, a hundred ten at the most. So, but then on top of that, I had to actually, next week, give them updates of where we're at and what the plan is going, because we know, I know already, we're not going to spend the three fifty, four hundred thousand that they want us to. It's just not feasible and we, we don't want to just spend money to spend money. So we, we have to have a, a plan and, and they're okay with the extension part of it. It's just communication with the state and going, we also have to have the bid process with, we have to go through that process. And then once that's, once we have these bids come in, then we have to, if we have a recommendation, Bill provided a recommendation, so I sent that to the state and that's what generated that MDE letter you have in front of you. So then hopefully that coincides with the recommendation and approval by the board. So it's kind of a logistical step here.
So let me, just one quick question. If we, if they approve the equipment and installation cost?
Yes.
Is that imperative so that we get it ordered in time? Is it an ordering issue or?
For Bill, yes, he commented on that. It takes about six weeks out and he wants to make sure it gets done in July. So we're, you know, great, here we are, first of June, and he wants to make sure we can take care of it in July when there's some downtime. He was initially hoping to maybe start it right when school is out, just to take care of, and make sure we get plenty of time. I'm not sure what the true timetable is for pulling out what we have and putting in the new.
I understand your problem with the state, okay? And I appreciate that. Here's my problem. We have someone that is here to put a project together that you know is going to have demolition and you know is going to have a finished product and everything in between. Why don't that come to me in a package? It should, and I'm not, I, I don't know who's the blame.
You know.
And I'm not, hang on, and I'm not pointing fingers. I want a package. I want to know what it's going to cost to tear it out. I want to know what it's going to cost to plummet, vent it, put electronics into it, put the new product in, and flip a switch. That's a project. This isn't a project. And so when, when something like this comes, it goes back to what I said about the bus wash. We had a project. We bought a bus wash, like we bought this stuff. And when we went to put it in, we didn't have an electrical service that worked. We didn't know that we needed different drain or filtering systems. Because why? Because we didn't do a project. We bought a bus wash. Here, we bought kitchen equipment. We don't have a project. So we need to learn how to do projects.
So can I interject for a second? The letter from the state that says they've approved it based on the federal guidelines says that the funds must be expended no later than June thirtieth, which means we have to have kind of checked to them, right?
Yeah, and that's.
Has to have come out of that account. There is, there is a sense, some sense of awareness there.
But from, from Ken's perspective, that's something we can look at, potentially building into the building site meetings when we identify projects and then in developing budgeting plans, which, which we'll need for the, the plan that I have to submit to the state anyway. So that, that can kind of coincide with that and, and then we can provide that for board at least awareness and information as the process go along with the building.
So I think, I think the, the big question for us, you know, for the board would just be if, if this is eighty-four thousand, and I understand that this is cafeteria fund money, so it's not general fund money, it's still money we have to spend. However, from a principal perspective, right, we want to make sure that we're not talking about really eighty-four, but it's actually a hundred and seventy-five by the time you get into all of it.
Right, no, I truly understand, yeah.
So I think probably what makes the most sense, even though it might delay us by a couple of weeks, because we're really only two weeks up from our next board meeting.
Yes.
What I would like to suggest would be that we get all appropriate bids to have electrical and everything else. And then when they're looking at it, they'll be able to make a decision to vote on and approve.
All in one package.
So it seems like that is a logical approach to.
Yes, yes.
If you need heat taken off you to make your life easier, I'll vote yes on this right now. But what my point is, is when they, when the people we hired to build that Performing Arts Center, they didn't buy a stage and chairs and everything else and then go, oh, man, maybe we better get some electrical in here too. And that's what we've done. We've done it twice. We just did it again. So if we can't do our own projects, and this maybe probably should be directed more at Ben and you, because you're just the guy dealing with the money end of it, but the next project needs to come in, in better preparation to the board, I think. And I can only speak for myself, but if anyone else here thinks that this was done properly, God love you.
Well, and not only that, every time we get a project, we got to vote right now. It's the last minute thing. And this is just another one that, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're putting it off to the next meeting. I think that's great, and I hope we have. I think that's great, and I hope we have everything we need. But we're pretty notorious for, we gotta have this right now.
So if we do that, if we get a full proposal, including all of the upfront installation, product costs?
It would be in your next board packet.
Right.
Itemized so that you can see the total cost of the project.
Right, so that would give us enough time to file an extension with the state in the event that it went over the hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes, yes, and I'm gonna, if there's any change in the dollars, I will have to submit an amendment.
Yes, he has to do that by the sixteenth.
Right.
So, okay.
So you're good. Because this isn't your problem, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, from the state compliance piece up, I can communicate with them and request additional time. They wish to have it by June thirtieth, but if things like this, if we need to take a step back and go through the process, we will.
Approving eighty-four grand makes your job easier, I'm good for it. I just think we need to stop what we're doing. And, and, you know, that's, that's my greater concern. I, I, I'm looking to make your job easy, but I'm also looking that when we start seeing things in the future, that it comes as a total package.
No.
So that, so that we can kinda hold people accountable for what they're doing. Thanks, John.
You have a question?
Two meetings back, two audit meetings back, I got a copy of the advertisement, the bid advertisement. And it has a page, half a page, of work by others. I got a feeling that you're not gonna be able to come back in two weeks and say it's gonna cost X amount of money. So I, I think, I'm gonna suggest that maybe you come back with what you can, but you come back with a cap on it. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna spend more than X amount of money unless we bring it back to the board. Because if you read this advertisement, I don't think you can do it till you get into, into the kitchen.
So one of the things that is absolutely true to that is that we know we have this equipment that we have to purchase.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be a cost that we already know. What we don't know is once you get into it, you know, but, so I understand the nature of the process. I also understand wanting to know what the scope is. So what I can do is I can come back to you with, with more information. And if I don't have quotes on every single part of it and knowing exactly what it's gonna be, it will have to be a cap type of a situation. So I can do that at our next board meeting.
I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but in the past, we've approved contracts, we've approved bids, that we never get a copy of, didn't get a copy of. We have at least one contract that was changed, we were never notified. I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we have a problem since you took over. And I appreciate that we do it differently, that we know what we're approving. And I don't, I don't, I don't mean to open a can of worms, but I think it's, I think this project is one to set the stage to do it right. And I apologize if I made a lot of work for you.
No, it's.
And the good news is, we're going to spend it, if there's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars there, that, that we're not going to hit that cap. So it'll be a reasonable amount of money.
One last thing, if there's gonna be that much left, is there another building that we should start looking at, that kitchen? I mean, in, in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is.
We got a whole year we can plan it and have our ducks in a row come next June, or next May.
No, I mean, initial thought was, is to, to look at DEEP as well.
I don't care where, I mean.
But, but beyond that, there's gonna be some, you know, looking at what we need to spend versus what we're, it looks like we're gonna spend. There'll be some additional equipment purchasing capital needs in food service fund. So this is gonna be probably a two to three year process.
And they're okay with that?
Yeah, and it's communication, you know, they, they would prefer it to be, make your decision, spend the money, get it done. But they've already, I gotta, I gotta, I've already noted that a lot of these projects we'll carry into next fiscal year. And they also, I'm just gonna be, I'm basically on constant contact with the representative from the state. And, but she said a lot of districts are, and it's, it's, they put, they put the compliance in place, but realizing that it's not feasible for districts to meet, because a lot of districts have the same scenario in the file, and we're gonna be communicating there too, so.
So are we suggesting table and purchase of the equipment tonight?
Yes, that's what I got. Excuse me. Exactly, and I caught it. Right here.
Well, thanks, Mike, and I appreciate you hosting those meetings. It was, I found it interesting, so thank you.
Thanks for starting all that trouble, Mike.
All right, we have some informational items on our agenda. I don't think we've had any questions.
We didn't.
From the last meeting. Any employment of the non-certified staff? And payment of bills?
Copy of the check register.
That's all? All right, any questions on those? All right, moving on, we have Neola Technology Policy, it's our second reading.
All right, so as requested last time, I've asked Travis to come so that he can answer questions that you might have. We wanna make sure we have an opportunity to discuss particularly the technology policies which are gonna be in the white sheets. We're gonna be asking you to approve the Neola Technology Policies zero one hundred, seventy-five forty, seventy-five forty point zero one, and seventy-five forty point zero two tonight. And so Travis has, is available to answer questions. And as we kinda look through here, I guess we could start by what questions you might have after, you know, we reviewed them a couple of weeks ago, but certainly there are probably still questions that you might have as you looked at it.
I got a question. Does the district use a third-party provider as our webmaster? Or is that you?
Third party, we go through Ed Leo.
Third party?
Mm-hmm. It's a contracted out, web service.
Okay, and this says, contact them and ask if they have audited a slate for accessibility pursuant to the ADA standards.
We also have a third-party ADA compliance product that we purchased a couple of months ago. It's a site improve, and many of the districts in the county are also using that, and that does an audit every day. It gives you a lot of information, some of it's pretty difficult to implement. Even the state mandated part of our webpage, it does the transparency page, it's not really compliant. So there's a little bit of disconnect with the state in that, but we do scan that every day and I get a report on it.
Thanks.
Once you've identified any potential issues or discrepancies, do you have a particular length of time before those have to be corrected?
We don't have a, we are fortunate, we haven't had a complaint by the Office of Civil Rights, so there is, there's nothing that's in there for us. As far as I know, we're clean right now, but we'd like to get it corrected as soon as possible if there was something.
Anything glaring that you found through all of this, these changes, these upcoming changes?
The ADA compliance, there's a few things on it that they want that we don't have on there. One of them was a site map, so I sent a ticket to Ed Leo to see if we could get that, but that was about it, I mean.
A site map is?
Site map is like, they wanna, it's kinda old school, but they, it's a site map where you click on it, and it'll give you a navigation of the directory of all the websites. So it'll set up, it's kinda like a shorthand navigational page. But that was the only thing that I really noticed, so.
And that's required to be up at the top?
It just said to be on the main, the homepage is all it said was to be required.
Okay. I think it's somewhere in here, it mentions that it should be on the top left-hand side or something.
Well, our transparency page has to be specifically on the top right-hand piece.
Okay, that's what I was asking, because that has to be right up there.
And there is a person from the state that will call and say, hey.
There's a police officer, there is.
They, they, they press that.
As far as that site navigation, I think it could be anywhere on the, normally to the bottom footer.
One, one thing that I think is helpful about this document, you probably noticed, like, the first page, it says, information technology collection supplement. This gives you that Cliff Notes of, this is essentially the changes that were made there. And so if you go through, you'll look at, and we can go through each of these, but you'll see where seventy-five forty is, it lists seven different things that were changed. Now, many of the things were, we changed the title from computer and technology network to technology. You know, they're just simple language changes. But some of them, as you read through, this is kind of your quick guide, your Cliff Notes to, these are the, these are the changes that have been, that have been made. And then they give you the actual policies themselves in that document. So that's one of those things, when Mr. Peters came, I wanted you to see so you could have all that at your fingertips as you're looking at that. So I think it'd probably be helpful, Travis, do you wanna just take us quickly through the definitions, I think are pretty straightforward? Yep, and then if you turn to, unless anyone has any questions about the definitions, they're essentially just updating from, you know, things like CD-ROMs to, you know, you know, web-based applications and things like that that are.
Yeah, the definitions are just, they're just going more generic with them, and there's encompassing more products, is all I noticed. And I didn't have a problem with any of the definition changes at all, so I thought they were, they were all good. I didn't have a problem with them, but is there any specific questions on any of them? I know they expanded on like the social media definition, and they really honed in technology, so.
Just a quick one, and Carrie just answered, I think, that seventy-five forty, page two of six, when Superhead Shale created a technology governance committee, you're going to give that to me, or did we discuss that last time?
Yeah, so in this particular case, we have to have a technology governance committee. Now, that doesn't, the law doesn't stipulate who's on that committee, it'd be two people. I know Travis is certainly gonna be one of those people.
I had that on as a question mark, he is for sure.
Right, and he has a little bit of a team that, you know, they oversee some of that. But he also has a plan for spending. When we do a technology update at a future board meeting, you'll see, here's our plan for replacing computers at Moorish, for example, or teacher machines, or we're gonna be getting Chromebook cards here. And so he's actually got a plan that's laid out over time so that we're not saying, okay, this year, we have to spend two hundred thousand dollars because we haven't been building anything into the budget over the course of the last five years. You know what I'm saying? So, so he has that purchasing plan that he can share with you as well, which is a part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so seventy-five forty, there are a couple of changes. Travis, you wanna go over those? You can start one of six.
It's two of six. Well, I mean, unless you wanna start one of six.
Page two of six. The, the real question that you need to discuss on, on page two oh six is whether or not you want me to report to you any changes or amendments annually to that, or whether you wanna actually approve that. My recommendation is you could go either way, but I don't know that that's something you wanna.
I have a, actually, I want.
Recommend the approval of.
Is that what you want? I mean, it's fine.
That's what I got, Mike.
Are you making that as a motion?
We're not making it as a motion, this is discussion, but we are gonna wanna kinda shore up how you wanna.
Okay, that's, that's the same thing that I have, recommend, recommend the approval of. I do have a couple of questions here, though. It mentions policy seventy-five thirty point oh two, and I don't have a copy of that in my policy book at home. And it talks about personal devices, so how can we govern something that we do not own?
So, personal devices are governed by the technology that we put in place to filter. Like, we are required to have SIPA compliance, we're not allowed to show pornographic material or obscene material. So that's all done by a content filter that's hosted at the ISD. So no matter what device you're using, and it's all funneled through that gateway.
Gotcha.
Now, if it's a personal device that they turn off Wi-Fi and get onto their own data plan, then of course we can't do anything besides a teacher in the classroom supervising. But we do have a technology in place that does limit what they can get to.
I think that's what we had questioned last time.
Is that on all of the, on all of the Wi-fis, the visitors, the students, and the staff?
Yeah.
So all has the same filter?
It's got the same basic filter. So if you're not authenticated, then you'll get the most basic level of filtering, which is, you know, a little more in-depth. And then if you're authenticated and like a teacher, then you might be able to get to Facebook, to Instagram, or something like that. But the basic filter is the same as the students have, and that's pretty well locked up.
So all, all three have the same filter?
Yes, yeah, they all have the same.
I asked my daughter this, and I said.
Policy number fifty-one thirty-six says that personal communication devices, there's no expectation, expectation of privacy on school property.
And there isn't. You're still going through that gateway, you're still going through the content filter, and everything that you're doing is reported. It might not be attached to your name, but it is attached to the IP address that would be linked back to the computer, so. If you connect to the network, you're gonna be SIPA compliant.
What happens if they get on their own and then bypass our filter? I mean, we can't control it.
Definitely the kids try that all the time, and we just, if something crops up, then we block it and lock it down. Over the years, they've upgraded the content filter to newer and newer technology, and the one that we got right now is pretty good. It'll do HTTPS inline filtering, which even if they try to get around it, it will still block most of the technology. So the problem we're running into now is that most kids have a data plan, and they can just shut off Wi-Fi and use their own data plan. And then that would go back to the parents having to monitor that on their data plan.
So just to kinda methodically go through here so you know what you're approving when you actually vote on it. Page two of six, several of you have said you'd like that to be recommend the approval of, so is that, any objections to that?
I guess I'm just gonna ask, what would you be approving?
You would be approving any changes, amendments, or revisions to the district technology plan. And it's gonna be an annual, when we do a technology update, and Travis says, here's where we're spending our money over the next year, here are the switches that we need to update, and giving you kinda that background.
So it would likely coincide with presentation of the budget for the following year?
Yeah, as I say, it's gonna go with the budget anyway.
Well, particular to tech now.
I'm just trying to make sure it's part of what we do.
It should.
It's, it's either gonna be, I just report to you what it is, or it's just gonna be that I report to you it is, and then you vote on it. I mean, to me, it's either, it doesn't, I can go either one.
It used to be a statewide mandated technology plan that they had spelled out, you know, in a specific manner. And now they're encouraging us to do most of that in the school improvement team. Then our plan will be more about the budget purchasing of these items, and then the five-year plan. So every year, we'll just continue to update that. So it's just that they, what we've had to do already.
You would.
Yeah, technically, we would approve that.
You're gonna approve it, the budget.
Okay, I guess I can say recommend or approve.
So we'll say recommend the approval of on that page. The next one where you.
Just a second, Ben.
Okay.
And we had brought up last time that we were going to include this somehow in our handbook.
So.
With, to make sure that they know if they bring or use their personal items, they don't have the privacy, it's.
Yeah, so in our acceptable use policy, Travis, can you speak to that? Is that clause included in that? Because all students have to sign that, and staff have to sign that as well. Is that included?
I think it is, but I don't wanna say for sure.
That, that's something that should go home to the parents. First, first of all, if you're under eighteen in the state of Michigan, you can't enter into a legal agreement. So everything you make kids sign really has no, has no binding.
Red student and a parent.
Right, but I mean, the parents need to understand that, I think on a separate form, that a little Billy or little Susie brings in their device, everything can get traced, chased back to them.
Right.
And I think that's something they should understand. I don't know if that's in the handbook or not.
I know it's in the policy, I'm not sure if it's in the AUP, but I'm, I have to double check.
But I mean, that, that, that's something, I mean, just like when you send, you know, can your kid, can your kid be put in a school picture? You have to release your kids, I think that's, that's a huge, that's a huge amount of privacy. Both, not only for the students, but if parents come in here and use Wi, you know, use our Wi-Fi, you know, they may think they have an expectation of privacy when they're using their device, and they really have none if someone wants to chase it, correct?
Not easy, but, yeah, they would still have their own privacy.
Well, they would have the privacy of their device, but if someone. Well, they would have the privacy of their device, but if someone wanted to chase it later, they could.
We would be able to see what sites that they did visit.
Correct.
We wouldn't be able to see any information that was put on the website. So if they were using their credit card or anything like that, then...
Right, but you'd be able to see what sites they were on.
Correct, yes.
I, I think people should know that.
Travis, can you make sure that this gets into the AUP and any appropriate technology clauses in the handbook?
Looking at the AUP, it doesn't actually specify, you know, but we'll make sure we change that. And as far as the public use, I'm not sure. The only way that we would be able to implement that consistently would be with a splash screen. You know, so before you actually connect, you'd have to sign, click on an AUP kind of like when you go to a hotel, you accept our terms and conditions before we go in. Teachers have fought that battle a little bit with implementing that, but I mean, if that's the route that we want to go, we could definitely do that.
Can...
Well, I, I don't care so much accepting terms, it's, it's more of a notification. I mean, I, I, maybe, maybe I'm the naive one here, but if we, if we polled people, just the general public, that aren't computer gurus, and you said, hey, if you use the Wi-Fi at the school, do you know that they can see what sites you visited while you were there? Maybe, you know, I mean, you know...
I think that they would. I mean, and most people I know know that they can't get on certain websites when they're here at the wrestling tournament or at the dance thing. So I would think that it, I mean, I think it's implied, but I'm open to offer suggestions on that.
Is it a big deal to put a splash screen on it like you're talking about? Because that would be a...
It is, it is a big deal when you're talking elementary, because it would have to be implemented globally for everyone. There's not like a timeline down there, so it would, it would add another layer there, complexity for the kids getting on, which we already have them authenticate. So I think adding another layer would be more complex.
The kids you can have sign, the kids you can have sign off with a piece of paper. I'm talking about just a general Joe, Joe Q citizen. Locks in our building, Holly comes and visits us for a basketball game, and you're sitting in the stands using our Wi-Fi.
But are you saying that splash screen has to apply to everybody, if they're in kindergarten or they're a visitor for basketball?
Why, why couldn't it just be attached to the visitors and not the staff and students?
Well, the staff and the students are all using the same network. They're just authenticating with their credentials.
Okay.
That's what they're using. So it's still the same network that they're on. And the way that the content filter is, it's only one content filter that goes throughout the whole, you know, our whole network. So unless we have separate network set up just for guest access, then that would be the only way to really separate that.
We don't?
No.
So there's only one access in the whole building?
Basically, it's just a blanket guest access, and then when they authenticate, then it will change the filtering group for you. But yeah, so it's all one, one network. And then when you authenticate, so Kenning will log in, then you'll get the policy that's applied to your account. But if you're a guest, then there's no one to authenticate to, so you're getting the same network.
Well, maybe, maybe we can attach something to our, ours that...
Some schools do it.
We're, we have a board policy that we don't chase anybody's usage down.
And we, we don't?
Well, we don't, but we can. There's a big difference.
What happens if there's a need? I mean, with the reality that's going on in the world, I would, I would hope we wouldn't ever have to, but I'm thinking...
I don't know.
Ben, when the kids start school at two, do they not go for something to tell them? I mean, because...
They do, I think the kids...
I have a child in school and she knows, like, she just knows what you're saying.
The kids are covered. I think the issue is when you have a guest in a function.
Right, so you're more concerned about that than really the kids, because they, they know, they're told.
Is there an additional cost?
Well, I think they understand when they use our devices. I don't think they're understanding when they use their own.
Yeah, no. I guess I never really asked that part. I know about this.
There's, right there is a million dollar question. We've never asked.
No, I've never asked my own as well.
No, no, I, we've never asked.
And I check our phone every day.
I mean, that's something, that's something that we should inform our parents and our students and everyone.
Do they, Rob, like? Do they say that, like, if it's supposed to begin in the year?
We've been signing AUPs for years, but the guests don't sign an AUP.
No, 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 I just mean like with the kids, like, do they say, also your own devices?
Why are we so concerned about protecting people who are doing something wrong?
So they do.
If they're doing something wrong, why are we so concerned about protecting them?
I don't, I don't think it's a matter of doing anything wrong. I think it's, it's...
Then what's...
If they, if they think they have an expectation of privacy, they truly don't.
They just said like they do tell the kids that, like, their own devices, so I think they know.
I'm not protecting anybody. I, I, if people think they have an expectation of privacy and they don't, they should be aware of it.
That, that's my point, more of a notification than...
For not the kids, the people.
Put a sign on the door.
That, that would be fine with me, too.
Put a sign on the door.
Put a sign, if you use our Wi-Fi, you know, I mean, it's something.
Right, put it on the ticket.
There you go.
We assign for everything else.
Here's your sign.
Right, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think you need to, I don't think you need to go as far as do the terms and conditions and agree to that. I, I don't think that's necessary. But I, I do think, I, I, I think if you polled the average person that would use, I mean, when you go to McDonald's, McDonald's could probably do the same thing to you. You know, at, at their Wi-Fi, and, and I don't think anyone realizes it.
I think that there's no expectation of privacy anywhere you're at.
That's right.
You're right about that.
So I don't think it matters if you're at your home, if you're at a public interface, that you can find information that you've been surfing, no matter what. And I can't say the specifics, but I would say that there is no expectation of privacy anywhere anymore.
Well, I don't think, and... I still think it should be in the handbook.
We can do that in the handbook.
Just so that we have something in writing in the event that we can say, you know, at least...
I kind of like that idea, but I may need an athletic ticket or something like that.
I, I agree with you.
That seems to be the most popular use for it, is wrestling gear or athletic events, so...
Either on the door or...
An announcement, a national anthem, good.
There you go.
So trying to move us along here, we have page four, five and six, which are, is an option. You've got three options there. Travis, do you want to kind of just give a very quick synopsis of those and your recommendation?
My recommendation is option one. That's the one that allows social media to be used by the staff and students. That's our current approach to this whole thing. We do limit certain social media websites from students. One example would be, we don't let them get on Snapchat and stuff like that. But I do, in this day and age, it's almost impossible to say that we are going to block them from any type of section.
Do you let them on Twitter?
Yep.
Okay.
We just don't let the students on Facebook right now.
Right.
Just because it's been a complaint from teachers.
Yes, for sure.
Now, is there, I've been in the classroom and we've had filters and we've had students that bypass and... So where does that, you know, put us? Is that just left up to the discretion of the teacher to monitor that?
They can, they can use their data plan regardless of whether on Wi-Fi, they can use their data plan to get on Facebook.
We've had it pretty locked down now and circumventing, you know, there's no proxying anymore. There's a lot of technologies that they would use to use that are no longer allowed. And to be honest, I feel we've noticed a lot of decrease in that kids trying, just because they do have a data plan. And it's not that hard for them to turn it off and just use their own phone. So example, if they wanted to open up Snapchat on our network, it's never going to work. But if they just turn up Wi-Fi and use their own phone, then we can't stop that.
Now, where does all this fit in when we have bullying or negative comments or harassment of people? Where does all this fit in with us and our policies?
So that would be a separate, that would be a separate spot. So our bullying and how we handle that, we have a bullying policy, and so that's going to be, this is more just what access we're allowing students to use. And so option one gives us the ability to operate effectively in the 21st century. But as far as what they do with social media, if they're bullying or doing that, that, that becomes a case-by-case basis, and we have a bullying policy, so.
And so most of these are working, they will intertwine with another policy that will describe discipline measures.
I realize that, but what I'm saying is when we have this access here and, and they have their own devices that get onto their own plan, we don't have any control?
Well, I'll give you an example. If somebody does Snapchat on their own data plan, we can't necessarily control that. But let's say that they did something that we were able to capture on a screenshot that was threatening behavior or something of that nature. And we can prove that that happened at the time that they were in that classroom. Well, absolutely, we can hold them accountable to that. The issue is a matter of policing it and whether or not we're going to be able to always catch everybody that's doing that, and that's just unrealistic, I think. But we, we, if we do have it, then absolutely it falls under our student discipline policy.
We do the best we can with technology. We, you know, our lab has a, a monitoring system that the teachers can use to monitor it, but not that on their own.
So does anybody have any objection to Travis's recommendation of option one there?
No.
So then you move into seventy-five forty zero one. And I, I have a recommendation that Travis and I talked a little bit about. And so if you look at where it says, page one of three, Technology Privacy, it says, "The Board of Education recognizes its staff members' right to privacy in their personal lives." And then it gives just kind of a general statement. There's one, two, three, four paragraphs there that is an option. And then if you look at page three of three, that's the other option. And my recommendation is that we accept page three of three with a couple of changes. If you look at the one, two, fourth paragraph down, you'll notice where it says, "All district technology resources and district information resources are the property of the board." There's a section in here that Niola put that says, "Staff members shall not copy, delete or remove any information or data contained in district technology resources the computer servers without the express permission of the superintendent or designee." And that just needs to be stricken out because there's absolutely no way that we're not going to have a teacher delete an email without recommending my approval for that. So that's, that's, that's absurd. So, but I do like the last section there where it says, "District technology resource of the board." Then it picks up on maybe five, six sentences down, lines down, it says, "Staff members may not copy software in the district technology resources and may not bring software from the outside sources for use on district technology resources without the prior approval of the Director of Technology," should be Travis in this case. "Such pre-approval shall include a review of any copyright infringements, virus problems and associated with outside software." So there were some doctoring of that, which I can make sure we get in, but does anybody have any questions of that?
Well, I do have some questions.
Okay.
On the part that you said to delete, what about if there's a parent-teacher contact? You know, maybe regarding just makeup work or explanation of absence or information regarding the home life or something? I mean, maybe at some point that would be important to you or something would come up and we are, they've already deleted.
Yep. So we do have a couple of things. We have a record retention guidelines that stipulate how long certain records have to be kept.
Okay.
Particularly for the records in the student CA sixty. But in the email, in the example that you're talking of, if a parent were to email, we have those archived. And so if we had to get something that had been deleted, we could go back in and get it. The question would just be at the point of deletion from the teacher's computer. While we can still retrieve it if we had to, I wouldn't want to have them getting permission to do that, you know what I'm saying? So I think we'd still be protected there.
And what is the time limit? Do you know offhand?
Uh, there's a, there's a variety of laws. Some of them are in a hundred years. I mean, some, some of them we have out in boxes and sheds for, you know, kids that have transcripts from nineteen thirty, so.
Special ed records are ninety-nine years.
Yeah. So...
Life expectancy's overwhelming.
Yeah. So, and then the only other option that I would recommend for that on page two of three, Travis can talk to you, option two there, just talks about personal messages via board technology should be limited with the guidelines. Basically, it's pretty unrealistic to say that there's going to be no personal messages ever, but... Any other questions?
So this one on three of three that you're recommending is version one of option one?
Correct. The version one of, the version one, and then option two is the one that we recommend there. So the last one where there's, and obviously if you have any other questions, but the last one where there's some decisions here would be on the very last page, five of five. You have two options. Travis and I would recommend option two, which is, "A teacher who elects to supplement enhanced student learning through use of web services is responsible for verifying to the superintendent that the web service is FERPA compliant." So essentially, the responsibility rests with anyone that's using that technology versus having to get pre-approval because that, again, becomes completely laborious to the teacher to be able to use any kind of, you know, technology down there.
So not necessarily prove each hack, but just to prove the tool you're going to use to commit the hack.
And then the teacher would say, this is authenticated, it's, you know, so...
Can we back up on this one just for a minute?
Yep.
Do we mention school-sponsored student publications? Do we have any of those anymore, other than...
We do have the yearbook.
Okay.
At the high school.
I think ITC could fall under that, too. The elementary said they have their own morning announcements, which would also fall under the policy.
Do we have staff that have their own websites that we have to be concerned about that might be an issue with the ADA and ORC?
I'm just talking about...
I know, I know they're widely, they were widely used, I don't know if they are anymore.
Uh, we do have staff that are using their own websites, and that's something that we're going to have to look at. The problem is, our site approval would only allow us to scan our own websites right now without an additional cost. So we're encouraging the teachers to use the WAVE tool that's hinted at in this policy before, or in the new one actually. That's a free tool, it's not as good, I didn't like it as much, but we do encourage them to use that, but that's something that might be coming down the road. I think everyone in the state has got an eye on that right now because so far they've only hit home pages and everybody's talking about that. But I can see it definitely going on to the teacher blog pages and further down the line.
Especially when you look at the variability in colors for people who are colorblind or have difficulty distinguishing shades and...
Well, what it might lead to is, and I hate to say it because we know, you don't want to take away teachers' freedom to use the website that they, they like to use, but it might lead us to eventually say that you're going to have to use our Edlio website or whatever we, we provide to the teacher. And then that way we know that for sure that that's needed.
They can still control the content, they read the formatting that we do.
Correct.
Okay, then, on page four or five, where it talks about students who want their work to be displayed, I think Ken brought that up or something, or pictures. Who holds these permit, this permission slips? Is that...
Every building, in fact, beginning of the year when you do registration, parents have to sign a form every year. For example, I was at DEEP today and got a picture with the kids with their art projects. And Mrs. McCormick, before she took the picture with me, because she was going to put it on Twitter, said, wait a second. And she asked the teacher, is there anyone in here who's not allowed to be photographed? Because there, the teachers have record of what students' parents have expressly said, my child's not to be in any kind of social media, you know, newspaper, any of those types of things. So we have to keep track of that.
So it's how that each individual building?
It is.
Okay.
That even happened at the ball field.
Yes.
And her mom was like, no, 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 you can't post that.
Yeah.
Because her child was, so the coach was like, okay.
And obviously, there are some things that are tough to police if you've got a parent at a ballgame that, you know, does something. But a staff member can't post something of a student without, if a parent expresses that.
I, I asked you and you explained it to me, but maybe you can explain it to the board. I asked you about a divorce situation.
Yep.
What if they disagree on the permission?
Yeah, so great question. So we don't typically see that, but we do see disagreements in divorce. I will not say that we don't see that. But we, we don't... But we don't typically see one that says, "I want the child to be photographed" and one not. It's actually a small percentage of people who say, "My child's not to be photographed." However, if there was a disagreement, we would actually have to go to the court paperwork and see if it was enumerated there. And then likely what we would do is say, okay, we would need a court order or a judge's order to be able to say whether or not we could put it out there. And we would probably err on the side of not putting it out there than putting it out there. So that would be kind of the approach.
If they both have legal custody and they disagreed, I'd just not put it out there. That's a simple solution.
Hold up the liability.
Yep. Get them on the picture, the damn picture, and they put it out there themselves.
Exactly.
I think I agree about that.
All right. So, sorry.
Thanks Travis.
Thank you Travis.
The others are kind of quick. I will go through the, I just wanted to let you know that I had mentioned this to you in a previous update. But I've been able to procure a contract for the cage. This is exciting. This is a positive thing, I believe. We're looking at how can we utilize the cage? How can we utilize our facilities in a more cost-effective way? And so trying to find opportunities to utilize our cage facility. We have a contract with the GISD and we kind of, I volunteered our district and we are going to be able to host the Genesee County JROTC program, which is a brand-new program starting next year. Kids will come from all over the county to participate in that program at the cage. And our students will have the benefit of having it right here in our backyard. So they could be, you know, if you're students that are interested in going into that. The Junior Officer Reserve Training Corps is a great program. The instructors that we have are fantastic and they're highly sought after. So we're excited, and so we'll be able to host that. And so essentially, this is just the lease agreement. They would be paying us a thousand dollars a month for ten months. We're going to, we decided, let's try it on a year-by-year basis. This is going to be year one. And so this contract is actually signed by the superintendent. And you can see Lisa Hagel's signatures. Her name is there as well. So this isn't something that you have to approve. However, I do want, I did want to bring it to your attention so that I could get some conversation if you had anything you wanted to ask or anything that you were wondering about.
Will we promote that this summer, the students to enroll?
Yes, actually, yes, we'll be promoting that. Actually, the counselors have been talking with the kids already this spring.
How many hours of what exactly, what kind of use do you truly have in the building?
So they'll be there in the mornings. So we're giving them access. We're saying it's from seven to two on particular days. But I've talked with them and we're going to be, we're still holding our pickleball, which is a big draw right now for our seniors. And so we want to continue to support that. But pickleball on Thursdays and on Tuesdays is significantly more attended than Monday, Wednesday. So you might have a handful, maybe two or three people that come to play on those days. You'll get thirty or forty that come on Tuesday and Thursday. So likely this will be Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And on Thursday and Tuesday, the JROTC program will probably be meeting earlier in the morning versus coming at the time of pickleball because we'll block that out.
How many members, how many people do they expect to have?
Well, it's going to start in the first year and they're probably looking at about thirty. And then as it grows, they, these two gentlemen did the program in Jackson County and they started, and they had about twenty kids to start, and I think they got to over two hundred. So it's pretty awesome, yeah. So they agree that way.
Now, do any of our schools already have the program going?
The recruiters sometimes offer, you know, different bootcamps in the summer and things like that, but not an official JROTC program.
Is that like over at the academy when they come get some kids and take them into program? Is this that?
Yes.
Or a little bit like it?
It's just, it's a much bigger commitment than that. It's actually, the kids go as a part of their day, a regular part of their schedule to get training. All right. The only other question for discussion tonight. John and I will be bringing you a preliminary budget on our next board meeting. Those, that budget will include our projections for the seventeen eighteen school year. And we would be looking to have that approved by our second board meeting in June. The other thing that we'll be doing is giving you our final amendment projections for the closing out this year's budget. So we'll be bringing that forward. But one thing that I had brought up a couple of board meetings ago, a few board meetings ago, is talking about fund balance threshold. I just wanted to kind of get some direction from you as we prepare the budget. Is there any thought or conversation about, do we want to start to look at a target? And it's not going to be, it's not going to be achieved this year. We've already talked about it. Looks like we, you know, we'll be coming in right around six percent. But is there, is there a number that you have that you'd like to shoot for? I'll give you an example. Patty York's over in Kersley, and we're talking about this, the superintendent there. They, they have a threshold of ten percent. And they will not go below ten percent. And they will not prove to go below ten percent. And we're in no place of being able to say or do that at this time. The recommendation from the state is fifteen percent. And I think that that's pretty unrealistic as well in our current environment. But I think it's going to be helpful to kind of know, from your perspective as a board, what direction do you want us to go? Do you just want us to continue in the path that we are? Would you like us, like us to shoot for some markers? Is there a percentage that you would like to see us get to? And it might be a multi-year process.
What's a feasible amount from where we're at to make that number grow higher? And you're at, you know, because obviously it's going to take several years to get whatever we want to get.
It is, it is. Yeah, and I think as we continue to control costs and be frugal with our spending, you know, I would feel more comfortable if you started to look at like an eight percent number. And, you know, maybe you make targets to try and get, you know, one percent or, you know, half percent even is substantial. So trying to, you know, save as much as we can. And maybe over the course of five years, it would be nice to see an outlay to say, "We'd like to get to eight percent at that point." And, but, you know, lots of things will happen, whether, what our state funding looks like, how we, you know, how we do with our student count, all of those types of things weigh into that, so.
So we could say, shoot for eight percent by five years from now. And then each year, maybe try to shoot for a half.
Yeah, and this isn't, this isn't an official board action that you're doing right now. It's just when we prepare the budget, we could prepare something to say, "Here's what the savings would look like if we were to get to seven percent or eight percent by the year 2020" or something like that.
I think a realistic goal right now is that we stay above five percent with the next budget. Because the last, I know the last two, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know the last two, when we've done the actual budget for the year beginning, have all been below five percent. So let's start with a realistic goal to satisfy the state and stay out of that, that five percent area. Right now, let's just try to do a budget or two and keep it above five percent or at six. You know, that, to me, that would be a good spot, a good spot to start. You know, I mean realistically, I think, I think ten. But until, until the PAC's paid off, you're, you're not realistically going to do anything with this budget because every year we bleed ourselves dry doing summer projects because there's only about a half a million dollars to spend. So I don't see, you know, unless the teachers are willing to take a big concession. Okay, never mind. I mean, be realistic. I mean, you're not, you're not going to, you don't have the money to do anything with because if you have an extra dime, I mean, we all sat here and we canceled a couple remodeling or projects that we'd like to do. So I, I mean, if we can just for a couple of years stop dipping below that five percent to start, I think that, I think that's a reasonable goal. And then see where we go from there. Because in what, a year or two, we do have teacher, we have, we have contract negotiations and we don't know what the state's going to do. So if we can just stay above that five percent or five and a half percent, I think that would be, I think that would be a great realistic place to start.
But anything under five percent puts you on probation, right?
If that's how you end the year.
Yes.
So, so when John does the final budget this year, if it's below five percent, yes, we get put in timeout.
See, I don't even like, I don't want to be that close. I would prefer to be at six percent and then if we come in, we're still not going to be in that.
Right. No, I, I truly agree with you.
Well, that gives me a little bit of guidance then. And when we bring the budget to you, we can show you what those projections would look like. So then we're giving you some information. And we can look at, you know, what it looks like.
And those comments are consistent with Ben and Myer's thoughts. As we look at the budget, we're keeping those same parameters in mind. Definitely don't want to get close to that five percent.
Well, if we start better, we may end better. I mean, that would be, that would be my goal. Because the last two years, we started below five percent and each year we end above five percent, so.
Yeah, a lot, you know, sometimes it's the student count, sometimes it's the established budgets that we don't truly need or utilize. And that just all boils down to more of a positive bending. So yes, you're right.
Just, I mean, there's two variables.
So something that I don't want to bring up, but I think it's, I'm obligated to bring up because I just feel like I need to. And I'm not asking you to vote on this right now. But when we think about other forms of revenue and what other districts are doing, we are one of a very few number of districts that do not charge students for pay-to-participate, okay, for athletics. And I know that that's a contentious topic. I'm not asking you to make a decision, but you can talk about it. I guess it would be, it would be irresponsible of me to at least not bring up the fact that there are other unclaimed, and if that's the investment that we're making, they're saying we don't want to charge at all. We do know that, you know, many of the school districts around us, you know, chart, and it's through different amounts. Linden, for example, I think is a hundred and fifty dollars. You know, it's a flat rate. Some places, like I think Clio is fifty dollars per sport. So there are things that students can do to contribute to that. Student parking, for example, is another thing that we have a very, we're on the extreme low end of what we charge for that. And so in many districts, for example, they use the parking monies to help upkeep the parking lot. The students are using that. So, so every board has different philosophies on that. And I, my role in just informing you is to say that there is other money out there. Whether or not we want to go down that road is really a decision as we're forming the budget and how you'd want to look at that. So just was looking for a little direction on that. Not saying that we have to make any headlines by saying we're adding all this money to pay to participate. But I do think it's important that I bring it up.
I think part of the problem is the free and reduced, the community here that's free and reduced. And can they make those kind of payments?
And what a lot of people would do is, in Linden, actually, they, they have a sliding scale. So for students who have free lunch, they don't, they're not charged to participate. For students who are reduced, they're charged a reduced fee. And then they pay the full amount if you're not. So we don't have to do, change anything we're doing. I'm just letting you know that there's additional funds out.
Well, another thing is, when I look at the overview of it, how much money are we really bringing in?
We did, we did do this and it generated less than forty thousand dollars. And where it left a bad taste in my mouth was it, I, my motto in life is treat everybody the same all the time. If you're going to charge one kid, charge them all. So if you want to charge everybody, and I don't want to sound uncompassionate to the kids at free or reduced, but in the same breath, you know, we can make so many different arguments in here. Does it really cost as much to play basketball as it does to play football? Does football generate more revenue during the year than what track does? You know, so when you're starting to weigh out the cost of everything, you know, figure out what each sport costs you from the coach to the bus trips to everything else. But, I mean, if you're going to charge one kid, I don't, I don't know how you, again, because we always use it, sports are a privilege. They're not guaranteed. And that's when we, we use, we use sports tremendously in here as discipline. So if they're not guaranteed and we're going to charge somebody, then we should charge everybody. And if we're not going to charge everybody, then we should charge nobody. And it generated when we did it, it was a huge, it was a huge argument. I despised it. You know, and hockey parents still pay for ice time. That, that I think I paid five hundred, seven hundred dollars a year just for ice. So when you're that parent, then you wanted me to chip in another fifty bucks? Well, it was just fifty bucks. But you isolated my sport or my son's sport because of the cost. But did you isolate all these other sports? You know, do you isolate what the instruments cost in marching band? Do you isolate uniforms here? You know, are gym shorts for basketball cheaper than football pants? So if you want to start isolating all these different sports and all the different costs, feel free. But, I mean, I, and I didn't mind paying for the ice time because it was way cheaper than when he played hockey. So high school hockey was tremendously cheaper. I enjoyed it. But there, there's an issue there when you, you know, I have a problem with it. And it generated about thirty-five grand a year, which basically would have paid maybe your football and basketball coaches. You know, I mean, I think they make about eight, ten grand a year, give or take. Yeah, varsity's good.
Where, where does the pay-to-park money go?
The pay-to-park money goes into the general fund.
To the general fund?
But you said it's a lower amount than we charge compared to other schools.
Yes.
What, we charge twenty-five?
Does that include, is that pay-to-park? I don't know what was going on the other night, but they're charging five dollars.
Oh, that's my question.
That's not it?
You know, and when you pay to park out here, one of the issues we have out here is when we have events at the PAC in the middle of the day and you have kids coming back from first session and second session, and they don't have a place to park. But yet they just paid twenty-five dollars for parking pads.
Right.
So whether, you know, if, that, to me, that's an issue that we need to fix as well. You know, when kids come back and they don't have a place to park.
I've never seen this parking lot full.
Oh, when they have an event here during the day, it's full. It's full, they're parked down the drive and everything else.
Never seen it, no.
So what would you like us to do then?
I just, I'm trying to get a sense for if, if the option is, we don't want to consider that. I'm certainly, I think it's, it's nice for us to be able to continue to offer that. But I think as we continue to go down this road and, you know, there's a limited pot of money. And so we just, I'm trying to make you aware of those other streams of revenue that other districts are using. We, I'm not advocating saying we should do that, but I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are, there is money out there in certain places. And where I know those things, I'll keep you informed.
Can I ask a, not a silly question? How does it work for the other districts? Like, do they take that and then it makes their parking lot better when they charge more? Do they?
Everybody does something different?
As far as the sports, how do the parents feel about it?
I can tell you in Heartland, when I was there, it was seventy-five dollars for the, for certain zones. And then it was more money for other zones. So you could choose to get into a nicer zone. There were people that were despising that. But the money that came from that, we used to pay for our security at the high school. So that included security of the parking lots, traffic flow, outflow, all of those types of things.
Since we have such a nice parking lot, maybe we should take the twenty-five dollars announcement this year and fix the parking lot. There you go.
So there's, yeah, so there's.
There's benefits to it too, I'm sure.
There is. There's, but some districts take it and they use the money to repair parking lots or, you know, those types of things. So it's just, it's just a concept. And then if you have further ideas on that, you can let me know. We're going to be preparing that budget for our next board meeting as a preliminary look and we'll go to some other things.
I think it sets us apart. I like that. I like the pay.
Okay.
I do. And I, all I hear is, I work down in Wall Lake. There is not one person that's not complaining. They pay four hundred dollars a year, plus a hundred dollars parking. And they still have, the parents still have to rake the softball fields and still have to do all the work. So my question is down there, where does four hundred dollars, that's a three-high school district.
Well, I mean, you know, and there's so much discrepancy. I know when my, my stepdaughter did Poms, the Poms team bought their uniforms.
We do too.
So, so, but football players didn't buy their uniforms. Basketball players didn't buy theirs. But yet everybody's paying fifty dollars to pay to play. So when you're the football player, you got everything. You got bus ride, equipment, uniforms. But when you did Poms, you never got a bus ride.
Oh.
And you always bought your uniforms.
Football buys you.
They buy jerseys, but they don't buy everything is what I'm getting at. It, what my point is, is that same fifty dollars doesn't do the same thing for each sport.
I agree. That's what I'm saying, not charging.
Well, I agree.
Don't charge it.
I was totally against it for more reasons than one.
Well, and I'm against it also because we're constantly hitting up the same people. They pay for whatever equipment or clothing they have to wear. They have, the parents have to pay five dollars every time they want to watch.
That's something else that if you're going to do that, you know, make it where parents can get cheaper, cheaper admission or, I mean, there's different things you could do to spin it. But, you know, if they do a pay-to-play, there's no fundraising. Because then after they pay to play, then someone wants them to go out and do a fundraiser.
That was my next point.
And, and I mean, it just, it never ends. It's like you're taxed and then taxed and then taxed.
Well, and sure, we didn't pay for all of that, and we do. So, I mean, but.
Exactly. That's, as I say, it never stops. So now you want another fifty dollars or a hundred dollars to come cheer. So now you want another fifty dollars or a hundred dollars to come cheer.
But that fundraising at the sport level, that's for a different, that goes into that cheer.
It does, it goes in that fund.
So when the coach wants to have-
So I think I've got the picture that you're not excited about it. Yes.
Not a bit.
Yeah, I would say.
Good deal.
I think that's it.
That's perfect.
Okay, so moving on, we have several board action items, beginning with the G.I.S.D. resolution and amendment redo. At the previous meeting, we had one name to vote on or to send Stacy to deliver next Monday night.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, we received the two other names. Paul Newman and Jerry Ragsdale, who are incumbents on the G.I.S.D. board, have been for a very long time. Previously, we had only received Richard Hill, who is not on the board, and we had, because we only had one name that faced them. So, in all fairness, and because we still haven't surpassed the May thirty-first deadline, we can consider all three of them, and we can designate two people, because we only had one previously. So, given that, and I think you sent that out this week, so everybody can look at their bios. So Paul Newman and Jerry Ragsdale were the ones we did not have. They are incumbents on the board. Richard Hill is not currently on the board. He's the one we had previously, who we had recommended to be considered as our designated representative. So, I would, I would entertain a motion.
You want a name?
I would like, I'd like to have two names, if we can fill in both spots.
Jerry Ragsdale.
Okay.
I know Jerry. I'm sure Brian knows him. I've known him since nineteen sixty-five.
Whoa, whoa. See, he was born, great alon.
He's a great guy. And he does a good job at over there.
Okay, do you have, so we can do them one at a time?
Besides that, he was in the front piece of the department.
Okay, so let's do them one at a time. So I have a motion to add Jerry Ragsdale to our ballot.
Support.
And we should have support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I also would like to have a nomination for another person.
Quick, quick question. Why, why didn't they have your names here last time?
I don't know.
That would have been my, my fault.
Yeah.
So, I know, so.
We forgave.
There was a superintendent's meeting where the bios were saying-
You don't need to explain yourself.
Nope. It's totally my fault, so I apologize. And so that's why I sent it to you, knowing that we were within the window, so.
So we, so we need a second name, Stacy?
Uh, Paul Newman. I have a family friend. He's a good guy.
So I have Paul Newman, and you're second.
Husband's known him for years, and his son.
I'll second it. He's actor, right?
Yes, he's definitely the actor. That's why I picked him, because he's-
I know. Just a second here, Carrie. Sure. I don't know if this is the way that we should vote on this, because you've got, you're doing one name at a time, and so the third guy gets left out, so I, I don't-
I did all of them.
I'm nothing against you, I'm just saying, I don't-
Yeah.
I think we need to come up with a different way that we-
Well, but, yeah, so now you would want to talk about the three candidates. You've had, you've got their bios. And so, you're, you're select, you're gonna select two of them to be represented and voted on.
So can we have like two votes?
Because what I'm saying is, okay, you do it this way, and we just have a, now we have Dr. Newman, and we vote, and that gets voted on, we, the third guy doesn't even get his name brought up.
Right, so, so essentially, the best way to do this is to follow the resolution, which would be the designated representative, and they have two slots. So you would have to pick between Dr. Newman, Mr. Hill, I believe?
Richard Hill.
Richard Hill, and then the first individual, Mr. Ragsdale. So, you're, you talk about which of the two, the board is selecting two of those three to, that you're going to support at the election.
Well, I realize that.
Right, I see what she's saying.
She's trying to figure out how to get a vote.
Like this.
Like that, you will.
There you go, just like-
But you're just asking for recommendations right now, but it doesn't mean you have to be okay with those two.
Everyone needs to give two names.
Whoever has the most, I take those and go, right?
So, so, so if you're okay, and you're okay, because you made the nominations. We want to go back to, and it has to be, it has to be public, so everybody knows how everybody's voting.
Correct.
So if you want to give Colleen, or Cindy, who would be taking the notes?
It should be Stacy, our secretary, taking the notes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll start, we'll start with you, Mike, if you'd like to give your two nominees.
Cindy made a face, I think she should have.
Two names?
This'll scare me.
Jerry Ragsdale and Richard Hill.
Mike's the last one.
So Mike, who up there? Ragsdale and Hill?
Mr. Ragsdale and Mr. Hill.
Okay.
Lorraine?
Uh, Mr. Ragsdale and Mr. Hill.
All right. Tony?
Mr. Ragsdale and Mr. Hill.
Brian?
Mr. Ragsdale and Richard Hill.
Ken?
Well, who am I to break the chain?
Well, you, you, let's say, I think you seconded me.
Let's do, write in Brian Sapanic.
What?
Write in, I gotta write and kill it.
Would you stop? Newman Hill, Ragsdale.
I'll do, I'll do Ragsdale and Hill too. I mean, I'm, why am I gonna break the chain?
Right, we're all here, we're good. Carrie, Ragsdale and Hill. Okay, I'll do Ragsdale and Hill.
Why don't you vote no one, you guys, and then I vote yes and you, yeah, me?
Okay, it's Ragsdale and Hill.
Very good.
Okay, so we're, so we're good with our nominees for the G.I.S.D.?
Yes, and I'll take those with me, I guess.
Funny. And, and just so everybody knows, Stacy's gonna represent us Monday night.[1685.02]